Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this city council meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2019, to order. Go ahead, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bringold, here. Duncan?
Here.
Gesmi?
Here.
Lindell?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Montgomery?
Here.
And Mayor Altough?
Here. You stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor, if I may, Mary Jill and I want to add an item to the council business, calling for a special meeting next Wednesday, November 13th, at 7:30 regarding a personnel issue. There has to, there's no action that's going to be needed, but we have to do it for posting.
What's the date on that?
Next Wednesday. We're going to be here for Sandstone.
I was going to say, because we have that other one already.
7:30, that's why I, okay. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Bill, and second by Mayor Jill, approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed or discussion or resolution as council business. For you in the audience and at home, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending October 31st, 2019. Item B, minute meetings for the October 15th, 2019 city council meeting. Item C, approve a job description for the utility billing clerk, receptionist, office assistant position. Item D, accept the EDA recommendation pertaining to industrial park land sale. Item E, authorize staff to negotiate a final subscription agreement with Novel Energy Solutions or Nocomus Partners. Item F, hire an unscheduled part-time employee for the ambulance department. Item G, unscheduled part-time employee wages. Item H, a skid loader trade-in purchase. And item I, resolution 2448, authorizing the 2020 city license renewals. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
Letter C, please.
Okay, we'll put that on our council business as item 6A. Job description. Okay, anything else? Could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item C? So move. Motion by Morris.
Second.
Second by Derek. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Well, we'll go right to council biz, and I'll bring up 6A, which I'll turn it over to you, Derek. Approve the job description for the clerk.
Yep, so last meeting, we talked about it a little bit. One of the concerns I had was, I just wanted to get Wes's feelings on it, on moving the position from, you know, Public Works up here. Wes wasn't here that time, and I hate to put you on the spot, but just kind of wanted to get your feelings about it, is all.
Yeah, so I was, I watched the meeting last, last time, and I was aware that it got pulled down. Me and Dave have had a couple of conversations in regards to this. I did have some concerns as far as what this person would be doing as far as a Public Works staff member support for Public Works Department, doing scheduling and stuff like that. I had some concerns on how that would play into the whole position itself. Me and Dave had some conversations, and under the understanding now that this person is going to be doing the utility billing, and then other portion is going to be supporting the Public Works staff. I just didn't want to lose that staff member. So it's going to be a change for all of us down there, but sometimes change is good, so I'm willing to give it a shot, and as long as we can have that support staff that, you know, we're going to be losing down there at the shop, so.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know.
And then the other issue that I'm sure you guys remember was with the possible police thing coming up again, too. I think we thought last time that maybe we should wait till there was a resolution there. I don't know if that's what we're still thinking, but, so yeah, I guess that's my feelings on it.
When I brought it down last time, I had no intention of killing it. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and then make a motion that we go ahead and approve it and hire for it. I think it's a job that needs to be done, and we're going to be hiring for it, whether we're doing it now, or in six weeks, or whenever. And right now, there is a real person doing this job on top of their own job, and I think if we don't take that and give it to another person, the person who's doing it now is going to have flames coming out of their feet. I've seen this happen before. I've been that person before, in my temp life, where they just keep piling on and piling on and piling on, and pretty soon you can't do it anymore. So I think, I think it's important to hire for it now, and as long as you're okay with it not being down at Public Works, I think that was a major. And we can always, if, if something doesn't work, things can be changed, too.
Yeah.
So it's not all set in stone.
And like me and Dave talked about, it might be, might be easier for the residents to have kind of a one-stop shop, where they can go into the DMV, they can go into the utility billing person.
Sure.
We'll just have to work on some communication stuff between Public Works staff and this person, so.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this is just to approve the job description, and the duties, and the location? This is not announcing of a hiring, or there's no timetable? This would, this could still take quite a bit of time.
We would advertise as we normally would, and the process would involve at least two hours.
Yeah, it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow.
My motion, do we approve the job description and put it out there?
So moved.
Mary Jill?
I'll second.
Bill? Any more discussion? I think it's worth a shot to see what happens with it. I mean, if it doesn't work out, it used to be up here one time, yeah, but, you know, I know people go down there, you have salesmen going in there, and sometimes it's nice to have a person down there, too, but.
See how it goes.
We could give it a shot and see how it works, I guess, so. Okay, any others, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Let's move on to reports. Called, "Welcome back." Welcome back.
Welcome back, yes. Thank you for your mention. That's so nice, and I want to thank everyone who's been stopping into the Chamber office and welcoming me back, being gone for three weeks. You know, you just get away from everything. It's amazing. I do have a couple of thank-yous. I do want to thank the police department for covering the trick-or-treat trot. I heard a lot of great comments about you being on the intersections and keeping the traffic moving, as well as the families safe. To give you an idea on the trick-or-treat trot, we had 53 businesses participating in handing candy out to the 650 to 700 children.
Wow.
And remember, that was in one hour. We did it from 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock. It was just hilarious, and a lot of fun, and so I hope we keep moving on with that, that particular event. We do have an open house for one of our newest Chamber members and one of our newest member or businesses in town. This is on Friday tomorrow, November 8th, 11:30 to 1:30. It's Integrity Driving School, and they are located in the Cannon Falls Stamps Building, the CF Stamps Building, and so if everyone would come down and welcome these two ladies. They are very, very nice, and I think they're going to do a great job. You'll see their little black car zipping around town. And so tomorrow, 11:30 to 10:30, or excuse me, 11, yeah, 11:30 to 1:30, down at the CF Stamp location. And then Deck the Falls, you know, we, we can't get too slowed, slowed down at the Chamber office. We just jump right into the Deck the Falls Parade and the sales and specials that'll be going on. We are putting the posters and programs together, so if anyone in the community wants to have a parade unit, please contact us. We're looking for floats, decorated vehicles, carolers, you name it. And so whatever can be in a parade, and we will limit it to 30 units this year. We had 22 last year, so we just want to make sure we, don't make it too long. We also have our program schedule that will list out all of the sales and specials during the Deck the Falls Small Business Saturday, and they have been coming in like wild, and so if your business is doing any kind of a special, please let the Chamber know so we can advertise it for you, and we can get it onto that program so they'll be out into the community. I do also want to add that we are trying to add one more event to Deck the Falls, and that is having fireworks after the lighting of the Christmas tree. Now, this will depend on sponsorships, and of course approvals from the city council, but we're already getting sponsorships in, so I hope everything works out. And just to announce, the Cannon Falls Military History Museum is going to be open November 9th, 10th, and 11th for Veterans Day. Please take a trek out on Highway 24. It's a great little museum. He's got a special presentation this weekend for James and Gerald Tracy, who were in the Vietnam War, and so if you can check that out, that'd be wonderful. Any other questions?
I'll just add to that, I, I got a few people that came in who said the police did a good job at that parade or trick-or-treat thing. They were there and made an impression, I think, so.
Yes, absolutely. I also want to thank Wes and his team. The flower baskets were a big hit this year. They were actually big and beautiful, and that was from the watering and fertilizing that his guys did, as well as thanking them in advance for all the work you're going to do with Deck the Falls and garland hanging and Christmas tree lighting and all of that's fun stuff, but thank you, we really appreciate it. Okay?
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Joint Powers Trail Board.
We didn't meet.
Didn't meet?
No.
Didn't meet, okay.
It's just, part of the trail's closed down right now because of the bridge repairs and replacements.
Personnel committee? Dave, you want to?
Council's handled two of the business items already with, related to the ambulance. Tim was at the, at that meeting, and also with the utility billing clerk. The third thing was just an update on the Public Works Maintenance 2 position, and I'll say that, thank you to Wes, to John, to Tony, to Michelle. We've completed interviews of, of seven candidates. Wes is following up with several of the candidates, and hopefully in the next week or two, we've, we've got a candidate selected and hopefully come back for a recommendation to the council, so thank you to, to them, and that's, we're encouraged so far, I would say, so, that's all.
Okay, we should bring it up that we're meeting a week from tonight, and the council's meeting with Semcra and Goodhue County on the Sandstone. Semcra's been working with the county themselves to clear up all the titles up there and get it all, so it's all in one package, so they want to come and explain what, what they've done and where we stand as a city, I guess, with that.
I should add, too, for anyone who might not be in-depthly familiar with the lay of the land at Sandstone, I'd be happy to provide a, a tour to take you up and look, because probably the two most significant questions that will be posed by the multi-county HRA and Goodhue County relate to the connecting road to County Road 25, as good or as bad as it is, but there's a potential that that road connection could be eliminated, and that's one question that's coming back to the council from the HRA and, and Goodhue Counties. That's something that, that the city council is comfortable with, so we'll talk about that. And the second thing is, there's also a dedicated parkland that was part of the original Sandstone Ridge Platte, and so the question of the council there will be whether or not, near-term, long-term, the council would like to retain a parkland in that, in that area. There'll be some other issues, but I think those would be the most significant, and they're just looking for direction, because depending on what the city council's preference is, that will fall into then their work to, to fix the title. But if anybody would like to take a tour, just let me know, we'll go up and, and it's pretty easy to see, you know, where the parkland is, or where, where it's dedicated to be, and also the connecting road.
I think we're going to rename the park property, too. I don't, I don't want to hear Sandstone again.
Al Toff, Bill?
No, no.
It's a tough ridge.
I like that, Al Toff Ridge.
Green Clay Village or something.
Oh, man.
Okay, Wes, you got anything tonight? Good job plowing today, tell the crew. Jeff?
Want to thank the Chamber again for Trick or Trot. It's always a great time to be down there, see the kids.
Yeah.
They're super excited, parents, a lot of them are excited, and we try to cover the intersections where we know there's a lot of traffic and crossing. There may be some that we can't cover just because of our staffing, but by and large, everything went very smoothly for that. Tomorrow is Coffee Cops and Conversation at the bakery at 10:30 in the morning, and then next Wednesday is Triad at 10:00 a.m. That's all I have.
Again, I heard from several businessmen, they liked what you were doing down there at the Halloween thing, it was well done. Lanell? Dave? Steve?
I got to publicly apologize to whoever called me about the Halloween going on downtown, and wanted me to express my gratitude for the good work you guys did, Jeff, your, your crew down there, and I was supposed to call her back, but I lost her phone number, so I hope she's listening. That's all I have.
Matt?
Nothing today.
Bill?
Nothing.
Derek?
Nothing.
Mary Jill?
Nope.
I'm just going to bring up a few things. I've gotten a few complaints about Sustain lately, and I would encourage, if you, if you smell Sustain, call City Hall, and Blaze is open to our complaints, and he'll, he's, I know they're implementing improvements out there, but I did get some complaints early last week that lasted a couple of days, so if any of the council hears anything, or refer Lanell or something, so we get in touch with Blaze about it, too, so. I had a question, is, we had that tornado a year ago, have those reports been sent into the state yet, Jeff?
Yes, and I believe we received money just this past week. Is that correct?
Yes, we received the, we received the state disaster aid reimbursement.
Seventy-five percent, or whatever?
Was 162,000 some odd dollars that we received recently, so.
Very good. I was, I hadn't heard anything, that's why I was just going to ask.
Because it was a state program, we were stuck waiting for everything to be finalized by Public Works, by vendors, and we couldn't make our submission until all of that was completed.
You find tree damage or stumps, you didn't catch it in the beginning?
Yeah, so we, we made our submission in September. Everything was finally, all the bills were verified, and, and we could make that submission.
Just having a talk with Barb Hale, and she asked about it, and I said, "I was in process," but now I'm glad.
Yep, the state office, the gentleman there was very easy to work with, and made it very simple for us to submit, and they filled out all the stuff, sent it back, re-reviewed it, and then check was fairly fast.
Yeah, it was pretty quick.
Yep, very good.
Good.
Just a reminder about, we got a meeting with, next, a week from tonight, 6:30 with the county in Semcra, and then a closed session after that, or just a meeting?
That's yet to be determined.
Okay. Okay, well, let's bring us to public input. Citizens may speak to the issues on not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item at a future agenda. Public input. Adam?
Adam from somewhere around here. Was Sandstone on, is that where Cedar Hills attached to, or?
Yeah, yeah. The east end.
What's the, what's the road then that's up on top where Mencings were? What's that called?
Limestone.
That's Limestone Road.
Who's, who are we going to get to pay for the roads up there? That's one question I have. The roads pretty much have moguls in them up there.
You mean at Sandstone, or up in Limestone?
Limestone.
Yeah, we got the same problem with Sandstone.
Well, we need to fix these problems if people are going to try and build up there. My second thing that I was going to bring up is the parking in front of the winery. For the winter, could we go horizontal on the winery side? The way all the, you know, you get trucks that park in there that are full-size trucks with plows. Now they put the plows down, now they're sticking out in the street, and you can't get two cars past there.
You mean parallel parking on that side of the street?
Yes, like it was before.
Like it used to be.
Well, didn't we talk about no trucks there one time?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they don't read the signs, and no one writes any tickets, and then also they park in front of the fire hydrant down there on the, right on the, alongside the bridge.
Is an issue.
How many times have I seen that and have pictures? Those are my questions I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Anna.
Anybody else, public input?
That's a good point, actually.
Tim?
Tim, Valley Court. So I just wanted to, it's not on the agenda, but it's on the work session, and I just wanted from, this has been weighing heavily on my family's hearts, the budget for the police department, and I just want to kind of give you a backstory of why we chose Cannon Falls. Obviously, about four and a half years ago, almost five now, I was offered a position here, and you might know that housing is more than challenging to come by in this community, and it was no different that time either. And we had a great Realtor that we worked with, we got multiple offers, we found a house we loved, there was multiple offers on that property, and of course, being a young family with kids, we didn't have a bunch of cash laying around, so we couldn't pay more than the value of the house, plus have a down payment. So it started getting, you know, hectic, because we wanted to move to the community. We sold our house in Iowa, and we had to start looking at other towns, and one of those places we looked at was Zembroda, and we found a beautiful, brand-new house right across from a park, and the profession that I am in, as you guys know, I want to know about our public safety, and the thing, the reason why we didn't choose to live there, because at that time, there's a period of time that the police officers were on call. I don't know if that's still true or not, they, at that point, there was several days of the week they were on call, and with me being gone at all hours of the day, and if my family had an emergency, that wasn't acceptable for my family and I. My wife and I both know what it's like to wait for a police officer to come help out during an emergency, and we didn't want that. And so then we started looking to the north, and we found a beautiful, brand-new spec house in Empire, and started talking about that, and that's the sheriff's office, and trying to get information, you know, "Oh, they're there less than 10 minutes most of the time." "Well, what does that mean?" "Well, my family's having a true emergency. 10 minutes is a long time for me, and then, you know, not really any dedicated coverage." And they're saying, "Well, if it's really bad, you know, Farmington will come out to Empire, and yada, yada." And so luck had it, we found a secret house, we moved here, and I'm glad, because I know what we have for services and amenities. We have many great things in this community, the bike trail, and you guys all know that. And, and so if we start looking at removing admin staff, because that's what we want to do for budgetary staff, and try to save money just in that one department, that's the last time the officers are out on the road. In Iowa, I had the privilege of working as a reserve officer, which is essentially like a part-time officer in Iowa, and we didn't have that admin staff, so we were stuck doing all the evidence, all the reports, and then we were on the street, and this stuff would be happening, and you'd have to leave that and go. And so I think, for you guys, there's already somebody doing those jobs. If you eliminate one of those positions, somebody else is going to have to pick up the weight, so it's no different than the utility person's position. Somebody's already was doing that job, now we've spread that out, we realize that we can't live without that, and so now we are back to looking at hiring that position. And so I just want to publicly support as a citizen in that, I just want you guys to really consider that, because there is trade-offs if we do lose people in the office.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Nick King, 412 East Mill. I was just curious, the bill you were talking about, how you weren't happy with how the Public Works lady was down there. Public Works lady was down there by herself, but yet you wanted to send the officers out by themselves, you said that they could, one officer would be okay on, on a Friday night, or whenever, and I was just wondering if you could just give me a little feedback on that.
During public input, as the mayor's pointed out, we do not comment.
Okay. That's all.
Anybody else, public input?
Paul Larson.
Hi, Paul.
You might not recognize me without my uniform. I'm one of your local police officers. First, Matt, I want to say Christine had a wonderful time when you did the ride-along this weekend. She said, "You're welcome anytime." And you want to, any of you want to do a ride-along, you know how to get ahold of us. Our squad cars are, are always open. But this is the last time that there's going to be a public opinion to speak before you all vote on our budget, and it's been hitting our department very hard as it's been going on. All of you have said you don't want to take an officer off the street, so that obviously means that's coming either from Jeff, Joe, Bonnie, or Karen. And Mary Jill, I'm going to quote what you said earlier today.
What did I say?
"With Afton's position, someone's doing her job, and her feet are burning. What's going to happen to the Police Department when you take away one of those people? Someone's going to have to pick up that work, because Jeff does a lot of work, Joe does a lot of work, and Bonnie and Karen carry our load." So if you want cops out on the street, you keep our admin intact, because otherwise, cops are going to be sitting in the office doing their job. Think about it.
Thank you.
Anybody else, public input? Public input. Third and last call, public input. Okay, we'll close the public input portion of the meeting. Before we adjourn the council meeting, I want to remember that Monday's Veterans Day. If you see a vet, thank a vet. And I want to wish good luck to the Bombers Saturday-
Yes.
...in their tournament game, Dassel Crocato, so.
It's going to be exciting.
It's in Burnsville.
In Burnsville.
Do you know what time?
Afternoon, right?
It's in-
I think it's noon.
Noon, yeah, I heard noon, too. Yep. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Second. Motion by Bill, and second by Morris. Any other things, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We'll take a little 10-minute break, then we'll start the session.